All right, now we are.
I want to call this September sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. John, would you lead us in, I mean, pledge?
Yeah, whatever you'd like. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess you're in here, yes ma'am?
So we're doing a little bit down, seeing if he has any fire, where he's putting all the real and personal on the same sheet.
Get her out of there.
Sounds nice and efficient.
John, after receiving return to. John. I thought Allison was going to head and do it all. Well, I know you'd like to see him.
Well, I knew that we approved with real estate and personal property, exonerations.
Second.
Refunds.
All in favor? And it doesn't look like there's any refunds you just have more.
Thank you, John.
I thought there were a couple. Was it long?
I don't know.
No, there's no refunds. They were just exonerations.
Yes, okay.
Morning, Mary.
Yeah. I may.
Moved to approve first half payroll, September eighth.
Second, all in favor? Vouchers and invoice, commissioners, how many questions?
I have a question for Ruth later, but nothing that would hold things up.
You good, John?
Yes.
We'll make a motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
Second.
All in favor? Prior minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from eight twenty-three.
Second.
In favor? State settlements? I'm gonna do two things at one time.
Yeah.
I'm making. I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlements.
Second.
All in favor?
And then you have those partial settlement.
We all have a copy.
Oh, okay.
What were we waiting for, the notice? Please.
Yeah, we, we sent one or two all of them this year.
It's, and they've had the amount of statutory notice now?
Yes, yes, ten days, we sent them out Wednesday, that, that meeting.
Okay, well, I'm moved that we approved, did we notice this one?
This is sad.
That's be all right. I noticed we approved the partial settlement for the estate of Robert Russell Sloan, and this is an item that was postponed from an August meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. I just need to get his name so I can have it for the minutes, so when I get him, I make sure everything's right.
Do I have to sign a miss or anything?
I saw a signature line on there, thank you, Michelle.
Yep.
You're on.
Uh, Leslie Taylor, if you're on there. So this is just a drawdown request for funds, y'all, it's been allocated forever. Without having to get in place to the name.
Yeah, unless the commission doesn't.
Okay. Oh, that's, no. But I do have information on the bids that were opened yesterday for the water tank at Armstrong Creek.
Well, right now.
Yep, have you got any questions, Mr. Taylor?
I do not.
You don't need to, John, I make a motion to approve. All in favor?
So you have to approve, I'm signing this, because Cypress did it out of order and it had to be submitted. This is just one of his DOJ grants he submits.
I wanna, um, having read the leads, I want to make sure that he doesn't submit them late anymore. Because of all this, because Tom has to certify public, and this and all that, that's concerned me.
We had that conversation.
I figured. Okay, so, um, order for us to receive this DOJ grant, I move that we approve it now.
Second. All in favor?
Current sample.
Yeah.
So the offer to that all great, um.
Well, I've asked the commission, uh, last John to write up an offer to purchase five miles of trail from now.
Nalan.
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 Nalan, Nalan, okay, I'm, I'm a true hillbilly, you know? To the, uh, Golly River Recreation Area. And I also asked, uh, the, in the offer, I've asked for two acres of property for a parking lot off nineteen at the Meadow River Bridge. So we can extend, for the future, extending that Meadow River Trail, actually all the way to Golly Bridge, is what I'd like to eventually do. Through the Golly River and everything. So I explained a little bit about it, if anybody else has any questions about it.
Well, what are you proposing, are you proposing, we?
I'm proposing forty thousand dollars for five miles of trail and two acres of property off Route nineteen for a parking lot.
Do we have a per, or a contract written?
Yes. Oh, I thought you didn't make one up.
I have not seen, I don't look through the packet, but I didn't.
Would you get that from them, Ruth, and we can move to something else until, hey, look, I'm sorry, I thought he sent that to you.
No.
I apologize. Y'all's keeping me writing a lot.
What was the last thing we made, though, that I was? What's the last thing?
Well, we have software systems, contract update, and potential special meeting.
Okay, so contract for software systems. Just you guys have proven the contract. That's for the server support for the tax office.
I mean, we approve it. I interacted with it just the other day.
Second, all in favors.
And then there's two sign here, some. And then the last thing is Tom's special meeting.
Special meeting.
Yep.
Do you want to have it Friday afternoon about four o'clock?
Or two o'clock?
Yeah, two o'clock, yeah.
Oh, God. He's getting married on Friday, that's why, that's why he's joking about scheduling it.
Well, I joked about having it September thirty-first for over a year. I got in trouble for that many times, so I don't think this would be a big joke to her right now either. Uh, but anyway, the special, special meeting, I was wanting to present a budget, a, a fire levy budget. And we talked about the fire coordinator, maybe a deputy director. And I think some other issues was talked about is the fire prevention, somebody told me something about fire prevention. But I was wanting to set one special meeting to talk about all these issues, and I'm not for sure. I mean, I talked to Ruth about, let me see my calendar.
That's what I'm looking for.
Let's see.
When will you be back?
Well, we talked about the meeting being the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth.
Is that, when will you be back?
Be back the eighteenth or nineteenth.
Cause I'm probably gonna be out of town that week, so can we do it later, the week you return, after our meeting?
Well, on the main, the second meeting on the twentieth, you go to the valley for that public hearing.
For the, uh, possible per, uh, buyout or financial assistance from FEMA.
That's, that's the grant program though, right?
I don't remember what it is.
That's, I read about, I read that, and
But you guys have to.
I can't, I can imagine very few people are gonna.
And I'm going to that meeting, it's gonna be right after ours, so if you guys have something else going on.
What time is that one?
At two o'clock, from two to four.
Where?
In Montgomery Seahole. And I think that we need to, uh, make sure people from all over the county are aware of this. So mayor, glad you're here.
Put it on our Facebook page, please, Amy. Is my down there?
Well, she's not down there.
I'll send you information on.
I heard Angela's voice, but I didn't see any of her body, you guys are trying to throw me off.
Well, she's sort of hid, she's like, I mean.
I'll just speak to Amy in the ether and she'll.
Yeah, she'll get it.
She'll anticipate it, I'm sure.
When, when, you have any other suggestion between, I mean.
Um, I mean, I, the twenty-first or twenty-second?
I mean, I could, I could do either of them, John could do them.
I can.
Twenty-first, maybe.
I don't have nothing going on until October.
Can we do the twenty-second, so then if we need to, I need to talk to Michael Taylor or anything prior to that, I can do that.
Well, why don't, we just want to have him participate in?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can do the twenty-second.
Okay, and should we have it at the nine-one-one center since there's more room, or it doesn't matter to me? Yeah, cause I figure, I'm gonna request the chiefs and everybody to be there.
Student capability there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that'd be fine, that's a good idea.
So I said, make sure the space is available.
What time, need to, at what time?
Good morning.
One of them, I mean, I'm.
Stuart at nine.
Nine o'clock. Where is?
When do you think we're most likely to have the most participants from the fire, but I don't want to do it in the evening.
Well, can we set it?
But that's gonna be Friday.
Can we set it for twenty-second, you make a decision all the time?
We'll see, but if there's any high school football, they're gonna be tied up with that.
Wanna do it like Thursday evening?
Thursday at six?
I would do it Thursday. But we just, do we have to tie the day?
We don't have to set a time today.
Just so we can contemplate, you know, and make sure everybody. Puzzle whack. Wait there, I think there's a junior high football game that too.
It's the same time.
Hey, who never, whoever knew this was a big decision.
I know.
Hey, Thursday night and Friday night, lights are important.
Well.
About the day before the meeting.
I'm at meetings.
Well, the problem is, I mean, I'm just coming back.
You know, we might want to do that.
You might be taking care of issues at the area.
Oh, I'll be busy, I'll be busy.
Maybe the longest day ever and have it Wednesday.
I mean, I, it doesn't, I mean, I'm, I'm good with that too, though, but John's got a.
Twentieth, I'm fine with.
Well, I thought you had a meeting at twentieth.
He does, but we do it at six.
But if we're doing it at six o'clock, I mean, I'll be back by Montgomery from then, easily. And I can bring all of the applications, or bring all the information, give you a recap.
That'd be fine with me.
There's gonna be the twentieth at six.
I think if we're gonna be having a meeting like that, we ought to also consider, you know, we've been discussing for a long time, having an emergency advisory council. Putting that group together, I think that's a good time for that discussion also.
You've already signed it.
And what it should look like, I mean, I think by code it has to look a certain way, but if we're gonna stand something like that up, now might be the time to discuss it.
Yeah.
Thank you, y'all are looking, they're doing a lot, and, um.
I know, you're right. You're right, you're right, but I still think we should discuss it, that doesn't mean we have to make a decision on it, but we could at least broach it while we have a bunch of experts there.
So is it set for Wednesday, the twentieth at six? Oh, okay. All right.
If it's not, we can just do it here.
Okay. Okay, we, bid opening is done at fifteen, so you need.
Make a mistake. I was trying.
I'm wood right now. I'm opening a bid from Empire Salvage and Recycling. Who's your bid from?
Mine's from, uh, Reclaims Abatement and Demolition out of, uh, Fairmont.
Empire is out of Blue Forest. And this is for, this is the estimate on um, demolishing dilapidated home, four dilapidated homes.
You want me to go first?
These guys quoted each home separately, did they?
These guys were all together.
They did.
Well, they.
Well, they did it individually, and then.
Yeah, that was part of what.
Much should be one, and there may be all, uh, uh.
Yeah, I mean, they added them up, but they, you know, they're all different.
Yeah, that was part of the request we have to do for Ruth, is to separate each house out.
Okay, good.
Okay, so mine for Mount Olive Branch Road in Cannleton was ten thousand two hundred and seventy-five.
Okay, go ahead and read the rest of it.
Want you to read them, okay. Seventy-six thirty, okay, Oki L Patterson Road in Scarborough is twelve thousand two hundred. Ten fifty-two P Ridge Road Oak Hill is fourteen thousand.
Ten fifty-two?
Or ten seventy-two, excuse me, thank you, I was reading one below it too. Uh, thirteen fifty-two Scarborough Road Scarborough is, uh, eight thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Okay, well, they overbid each of these, mine, mine were all less, except for, which one did you say P Ridge Road was?
Uh, P Ridge Road was fourteen thousand.
Okay, yeah, so all of these were under that, um.
Yeah, I think John's is forty-two thousand.
This one's thirty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five total. For Mount Olive Branch, eighty-seven oh six, Oki Patterson, eighty-two oh six. P Ridge, ten thousand two oh six, oh six is the theme here. And thirteen fifty-two Scarborough is sixty-seven oh six, for a total of thirty-three eight hundred and twenty-five. That sounds like Empire, now, did they, do they have the same, what are they quoting on, did?
Um, basically for doing asbestos inspection, and, um, now if it does have asbestos, they'll have to come back and quote as abatement, just that's regulation. Um, and then basically to put, demolish the house, haul it off, and cede it.
Well, this, this estimate says, quote, for the asbestos inspection, demolition, and asbestos abatement.
Right, but if it comes back, um, they have to, you know, price.
Price the abatement separately.
Always included the asbestos in their origin.
Yeah, they don't know if it's, they don't test it until they get the bid, so if it comes back.
Well, I mean, the way this is worded, it implies that this includes whether it has asbestos.
Right, and they probably know, they probably already know. Cause actually, I don't think any of these houses have asbestos, but, I mean, if that's what their bid says, that means they've already know if it does or not.
Okay, and then they have, what kind of, we have the liability insurance, I'm just trying to make sure we don't go through.
Yeah, no.
Fire association.
Yeah.
Um, asbestos program.
Certification.
Certification.
Contractor's license.
Yep.
Um, I don't think there's a copy of the contractor's license in there.
Next page, maybe.
Hmm, no, just asbestos contractor, I got the same, obviously the same thing. Then it says performance bond furnished upon award.
What's the second page there?
This is the liability insurance.
Oh, this one right here?
Yeah.
That's a page two of the S.
Oh, okay.
Does it have their contractor's license number on any of the documents?
Better.
Probably. It may be on their insurance, yeah, probably on their insurance, yeah.
Is that it right there? Listen.
It's your policy number. We have their asbestos contractor's license.
Well, that, it, um, all combined, because they're both abate.
Intrans license should have their.
Yeah, it probably is in here somewhere, but I don't want to hold up the meeting.
Yeah.
We're all in little.
Go ahead and, and do a motion on that one pending.
Look through it and just make sure they submitted the same data, yeah.
Yeah, it's got their contractor number.
Okay.
Same data.
Yeah, yeah, they have, um, all their information, and both of them will provide a performance bond because it is still ground.
I mean, that we approve Empire Salvage as the contractor for the dilapidated housing removal, based on it submitting the lowest bid.
Second, all in favor?
Um, can you sign this real quick, I just, um, so what I have to do is I still have to wait for the court order before we actually do a contract, I've sent a copy to contractor Wes and Anthony, but hopefully they'll get back to me saying, if it's, it's one we used in the past, but we know how that works. We're just done under the line of the third county president, and then, yes.
Is that ever.
Uh, just that one.
Okay. The one that's down at the bottom of six twelve on Oki L Patterson. There was a note that was on the door.
All right.
Don't know who was put, put it on there, but it's been pulled off, and the door has been opened and closed a few times since then. So we may need to send someone down to put a notice on that door.
It's nine thirty, I guess, is somebody gonna introduce? Annie or? Didn't see anybody else in here, but.
I don't see her, I don't think she's here yet.
No, okay. Are you gonna take a break until she gets here, nine thirty? If she's outside, or could she be, I mean, is she in person, or is there anybody on her? Annie?
Sheriff, sheriff's here, why don't we just deal with his issue?
Well, it might take a long time.
I'm gonna be fine with it.
I don't think it will.
Okay, well, if Sheriff's here, that's fine.
Got a lot to do.
Three copies. Oh, that's the one. I'm not processing very well today, clearly.
Yeah, yeah, come on up, Sheriff.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Sheriff.
Back in the first of the month, I brought y'all, um, information that I had a tax deputy resigning the position and leave, and I fit in for pay raise for all tax deputies and secretary of staff within, on the other side, on the law court side, um, after talking through with the, um, they would go through, I still think it could do that way, but I came up with another one, and I, I gave it to administrator, Chris Lanier. Do y'all have a copy of that?
Is that this one?
Let me see.
This, this one looks an awful lot like the last one.
It is, it's just updated. I made adjustments. What I'm asking for, the pay raise increase for the tax deputies and the secretary of staff and the sheriff's law court side, and it equals up to be what the prior, prior quarters salary was twenty-five thousand nine seventy-five. I took out the, um, where I had it before, took out the benefit package. Um, so it's, it's gonna be a five thousand dollar savings to that whole budget line, it's gonna be whatever it is down for provision and dental of three hundred, and then, then whatever it is for family coverage, I'll even know what it is yet, um, sixteen thousand, eighteen thousand, seventeen thousand, or whatever it is, saving to the county. Um, so that's what I'm proposing to do, and I'm within all my limits of everything like that.
Well, I mean, we approve it.
Second, all in favor? Uh, can I ask one question, brother Billy? Them, them two Taurus', are they still on the road?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I know you asked about that before, um, Jenkins. Yeah, Jenkins Ford, they have ordered some, I'm wondering if this can get to, um, I found another one, um, Ruth and I talked about it. And, um, they come completely packaged, I had to get an updated what we pay for our list of equipment within one, I sent it to him, so I'm waiting to come back and say if it's gonna be around the same amount, so that's what we have.
Okay, so that's gonna replace the Taurus's?
Oh, we don't have any spares whatsoever right now, we got three that's in the shop, I called, um, the one that hit a deer. They got it all fixed, all the equipment came in at Lewis Nissan, it's at the Ford dealer now, they had a program, some kind of bike or something, the headlights wasn't working. Another one, um, it had a blown fuse in it, but they talking about my head, something with the fuel injectors that work and firing right, so they was trying to figure out, and the third one, I don't even know what's wrong with it, just to be honest with that.
Okay.
About quick.
And you saw it too, you didn't say.
And I got two new ones, and, and that's, the chief checked on them last week, they hope that the push board, that's all we're waiting on in that one, and that'll get the two new ones back over here, it will almost now. Done, real quick, also, um, Ruth and I talked yesterday, um, our current amateur patrol officer, Michelle, she got injured on the job, um, it was per seven days, I think, the doctor gave her that she's gonna be off and come back to work, where she's still in a lot of pain, now she's going to a ortho specialist. Um, and we are getting backed up on calls, talked to Ruth yesterday, and I called Kevin Walker. There's a gentleman that, what's his name? Janison is gonna come and see me today with Kevin, I'm gonna hire him as a part-time, he's gonna be able to work three days a week on the road to help us do it, and I still have an open salary, we're at, so it's not gonna do anything, I'm gonna pay him twelve bucks an hour, I think that's what I came up with, it's twenty-five thousand, what's in that budget for that, so, because it, they kill us.
Well, thanks for doing that, uh, hope he works out.
Me too, got, and I think Ruth said that he's younger, and he's really, and Kevin even said he really, Jim Jack, he wants to be a deputy sometime, just give, you know, whatever, it just gives us a person to start picking up animals and stuff, but he's doing it now, Kevin's helped us a couple times, and and I got like four calls yesterday also, I said, gotta move on this, and again, Mr. Walker helped me, and with help of Ruth, telling me to give them a call too, because I'll be coughing in circles like I always do. Um, so.
Yeah, thank you.
How many calls like that do you get a day, like?
Me personally.
Well, no, I mean, the department, how many calls do you guys have to respond to for animal?
Go over there.
Like that's.
I could pull up for you and tell you, I mean, she does her monthly, that she gives, you know, I mean, it's a pretty good bid, I mean, it really is. And it is, and that's, and that's the thing, you know, and we were just doing emergency calls right now, if there's something, a bike or something like that, and it's hard to put them I hate to say this, but you know, if it's one I can, and we're not gonna put a stray dog into our kennel, and then our dogs end up getting harmed or something killed by them.
No.
And then, and we've had to pick them up in their craters, but we at the point now where it's hard. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with that, like I said, I'm gonna do a fast background check on them today, check your driver's license. Then I'll do the supplemental thing, I guess, when he works, Ruth will work that out, I'll just do a letter saying, I'm gonna pay him twelve bucks an hour. And then he, we work out three days a week that he can work for me, pick up animals. It was a little bit, you know, and maybe he liked it, and we're working down there, and I can make him full-time, because we have to, you know, and then Michelle, what she's doing and everything like that, because I don't know how long she'll be out, I don't think she's gonna need surgery or anything.
Well, let's, let's get it, if you decide to hire him, let's get it on the next agenda, retrospectively.
Yes, ma'am, but right now, part-time, three days a week, leaving that to I hear more from Miss Michelle, because I, again, she thought she'd be back within seven days, that's what the doctor gave her, and she said Sheriff's Department's still hurting, she's on call, we got that worked out, so again, that's what we have. Okay?
Thanks, Sheriff.
Anything else?
Thank you.
That's it, brother.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
It was in, uh, back.
Okay.
We can do it.
Yeah.
We have our good time.
Thank you. Are you Annie?
Are you Annie?
Are you Annie? You wanna come up?
How are you doing today?
Good morning.
Good, good. If you'd stand over here, that way people in the internet lane can hear you.
How y'all doing today?
Good, good.
So I'm Annie with Anac and the new executive director. I've been in the office about five weeks. And I wanted to let you know that we serve your county. And I know that we have a very big presence in your county and we want to change that. Um, also, I am looking for a new board member that represents Fayette County from the private sector. So I am open to suggestions and recommendations. Are you familiar with what our program does?
I am.
Is Selena Victor still?
She is.
Okay.
So we need another individual that, uh, represents the private sector from Fayette County. So that could be anybody that, um, you know, business owner, pastor, anybody that you think would have the same kind of passion to assist people to, uh, help them out of poverty. That's most.
How long has this private sector person not been there?
I'm not sure. So I know they haven't been there since I've been in office. And I took over July twenty sixth.
Maybe that's why we don't have good representation, our county.
That's part of it. Um, part of it was the prior administration. So I understand that that they removed a lot of programs that we had previously had. We're actually seeking a lot of grant funding right now and my goal is to create a mobile office. Because it's difficult to find the hip compliance space that we need in the various locations. So I have already gotten approval from the state to seek funding for a mobile office, basically a trailer and a truck combination would be able to set up county courthouse, library, any place, and then we would have a predefined schedule that we would post on the internet and also, um, post to social media.
The previous office before it was moved to Charleston or wherever it's moved to was in Montgomery. Uh, and we did get a fair amount of of help. Um, and the people who were there at the time were taking care of the other counties also. And once the office moved out of Fayette County, so did all of our support.
So when did that occur? Do you know?
My first term, second year, so like in nineteen or twenty. I'm all for helping folks. And if enact is supposed to enact in West in Fayette County, then I would prefer them to do that.
Yes.
Um, in in Montgomery and and Smithers, there's quite a few people that has been helped before. I know both of the, uh, of the town and city governments have room. Um, and I would recommend that you contact them both.
Yes, sir.
Uh, they may be able to help you out with a place to, you know, set up and do something.
Well, I'm definitely looking for space in the interim, uh, in the meantime, you know, the board takes process to get a grant, et cetera. Um, I recently transitioned a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars that was set for administration and back into programs. So that is monies that we have to use before the end of the calendar year.
And, uh, Anstead may have some space that they could help you with also. If you're familiar with that, that there's right at the top of Golly Mountain and, uh, they're considered part of the Canola Valley, uh, plus a big part of Fayette County too.
Fortunately, the mayor's behind you.
Yeah. Man, do you have a card?
I do.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Annie?
I don't have any, ma'am. Thank you. Joan still does. No, I've I've answered. I've asked the ones I wanted to ask.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have enough time. For ten o'clock, don't you?
What's that to talk about the, uh?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think we do.
Okay, I, at this time, I'd like to move that we go into executive set. Let's make sure Michael Taylor's available, though, because it's well, when he passes here too, we could ask. Um, to go into executive session to discuss the offer to the net all group. That's item three on exhibit A, uh, and I'd like to seek some legal advice on this.
We're behind. I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. And, uh, we got some, uh, advice from attorneys. No decisions is made. And, uh, it is, uh, four after ten, two after ten.
So based upon, um, advice from legal counsel, we made a couple of changes to our, uh, letter to the net all group and, um, based on those changes, I'll go ahead and move that we approve and sign the letter, um, to enter into negotiations to purchase the trail that Commissioner Leesis or the rail bed to create a trail, Commissioner Leesis explained earlier.
Second, own favor. All right, gonna go and move the ten o'clock. Someone some A E Ps on there. Find that date.
Ron Robinson.
Ron Robinson.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, you're on. We can't hear you in here.
Oh.
He's off mute. Is he still on there? He disappeared. We still can't hear you. We mute and unmute him here and just see if it works. Mr. Robinson, can you hear us? We can't. Nothing.
We are still on.
He muted.
Put something in the type in there, the number that he can call in. Or if he wants to put a number in the in the chat box and we can have him call and put him on speaker. Okay, yeah, she said they're having trouble unmuting. We'll try to unmute you, Jessica, and see if that works.
Ron Robinson.
Okay, I'm gonna call that phone number and we'll just do simplify this process. This is gonna be a D C area code calling you, Mr. Robinson.
Okay, no, Phil. Phil wants to be the host so he can hear. We're putting it in the middle.
We're gonna put it by the speaker, so hopefully it can get recorded.
Got it.
Hello, is this Mr. Robinson?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hey, thank you. I have you unmuted on my end. Um, and, uh, I mean, I could hear deep listening. So I'm not sure what do you do as you.
Yeah, I'm I've watched him mute not mute you several times and it's still not working. So this is probably the best way to go.
Okay, um, well, the purpose of our meeting today is to, um, introduce the project of people saving other people in Fayette County and it's, uh, it's called the Molly's Creek, Layland Molly's Creek Project. And basically it's a rebuild project with about four miles of existing sixty nine K V transmission line. The replacement of an existing substation and rebuild of another. And the extent of a hundred and thirty eight K V transmission lines. So we're not anticipating construction of this project until October or later of next year. But as we began, we just wanted to give you an overview. So we have a team here that's definitely a power point project, must predict this. And again, to give you, um, the chance to see what what's it has for us to be on this process.
Okay, so that's gonna be hard with us not having you on Zoom.
Can you see me?
No.
Can you start, uh, start my video? Uh, looks like somebody's trying to unmute it. So that it's off, off, uh, it's off. Recording video. I'm sorry for the technology.
He's gonna send you a co-host invitation and see if that helps.
He should be able to share his screen now.
He said you should be able to share your screen now if you want to give it a shot.
Yeah, pull this. We're gonna pull us down, Wilbur.
I can't do anything about his, his, uh, he can share now.
Oh, it's starting to work.
Something's happening. Let's see, but now probably goes easy. Okay, now get your screen.
Yes, okay, I'm gonna cut you off.
Okay, I'm gonna hang up on the phone. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, let me try to start video here too. Whatever you did that allowed me to do that, that still can't start the video.
Well, we're happy that you made it onto Zoom anyway.
Okay, well, yeah, I, yeah, well, I'm sorry. We're having to hang up to the project and, uh, the group here that I have assembled was going to, you know, uh, actually present the PowerPoint project.
I'm gonna ask you to start video again and see if that helps. It's it's showing on here that that your video is turned off.
Well, I've accepted it and I've tried to turn it on here. And it just, you know, just just like the mute, it would let me unmute.
Aaron Brown's screen will be.
Do you have dual monitors by any chance?
Excuse me?
We're speculating that, asking if possibly you have dual monitors.
Um, I actually, I'm on a laptop.
Okay, so that's a no.
So I put the top in the light.
Email the PowerPoint real quick to Wilbur.
Could you email the PowerPoint, um, to us? Can you access?
Yeah, I I believe we can. I mean.
Okay, we're gonna type it into the, why don't you just type it into your email address into the chat? He's gonna type his email address into the chat and then.
Um, this is Jessica Lemons. Are you able to hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, I I can try to share my screen really quickly and see if that works. I have the PowerPoint pulled up. Oh, it says host disabled participants.
All right, we're gonna make you co-host.
Okay. All right. Okay, are you able to see that?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, great. Um, so let me make it bigger here. Okay, um, and we have a few other members from our team. Hopefully they are unable to unmute. Um, so we have our our project managers on the call, Graham Hunley, um, we have engineering, Mike Hupko, siding is Allison Fisher. Um, right of way is Dylan Mickentruff, and then we have outreach with Drew Gilmore and then myself, um, Jessica Lemons. And I'm gonna try to, uh, pass it off to Graham. Graham, are you unable to unmute?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Okay, so there there is a, you you want me to carry on, Jessica?
Yes, yes, go right ahead, Graham. Thank you.
Right, good morning, everybody. So, um, I'm the project manager, as Jessica said, for the project, um, the the map. The map there shows us through the the line that we're taking, um, starting out at, uh, at Leyland Substation, um, heading north. Uh, and then, um, what would be, uh, northwest up to Molly's Creek and then down to, uh, down the mountain, down to, uh, to Dunn Glen and to Clermont, uh, substation. Clermont Substation will be retired and, uh, become, it'll change its name to Dunn Glen and be renewed. And, uh, the, uh, structures and sorry. The structures and and line will be replaced, um, as as shown on the drawing. We've got a couple of, uh, the blue lines, there are some options that, uh, we're looking at, um, and at using and looking for the best option, uh, to suit everybody. Uh, landowners and, uh, also just the easiest way down without causing any, um, any issues, uh, or damages or, um, and as as indiscreet as we possibly can, as as you can of the power line. Okay, next, next slide, Jessica. Uh, it's approximately four miles of the Bradley to Leyland sixty nine K V transmission line. Um, we'll be installing the Glenn, the Dunn Glen Substation, which will replace the the Clermont Substation. Then we go, uh, around about point five of mile of a hundred and thirty eight K V transmission line to the, uh, Dunn Glen Station. Uh, then we'll be removing approximately ten miles existing sixty nine K V transmission line and the Clermont Substation, which, uh, as I said, has been renamed as Dunn Glen and, uh, and upgraded. And so the, uh, the reason and the need for for having to do it, uh, our structures are mostly, uh, close on a hundred percent, just about of wood structures. They, uh, have got several, um, issues of damage from, uh, from insects, from, uh, um, wo- uh, woodpeckers and then also some rotting damage. Uh, they, as it says there, they were installed in the nineteen hundreds, so fairly old, well, very old. And, uh, the problem we have as well is that, uh, the, uh, frequency of outages due to the the aging equipment. So we'll be putting new equipment, upgrading to steel poles and, um, and new new wire, obviously. And, uh, do and it'll, um, reduce, uh, outages suffered as a result of the aging, um, the aging lands, the copper wire has got, uh, old as well, so that'll snap from time to time in law in in, uh, high winds and storms. So that'll all be replaced and and provide good, good stability and, uh, much less uh, reduced outages down to minimal as we possibly can.
Wait, do look at that.
So there's a a K M Z map of the line. Um, you see the three blue options that we are still investigating, running. And also on the, um, on the west side there, we also got some some options that we're looking at going and looking for the best possible, uh, route so we don't cause too much disturbance. And looking for the best possible, uh, route, so we don't cause too much disturbance.
Have you guys run this by the Park Service, National? It looks like some of this extends through the park.
Yes, we've been, we've been in discussions with them. We've actually got a meeting tomorrow with the National Park Service, um, to to discuss and go through the issues. Uh, we we trying wherever possible to go on existing right away. But, yeah, we have been discussing with them and as I say, we've got, um, Craig Pritta, our, our siding representative. We'll be talking to them tomorrow, uh, as well as the rest of the team. Now, the existing structures, um, as I said before, nineteen hundreds vintage, uh, wooden single poles. Uh, average height is around about fifty-five feet. Uh, the proposed structures are to be steel single poles. Average height will be approximately ninety feet. Um, low reflective galvanist steel finish on them. Uh, and then the, uh, the right of ways, the typical right of way width was approximately a hundred feet wide. There's some pictures of the structures, uh, the existing of those wooden structures with the crossarms. And, uh, um, as I say, getting old and and eaten up. And then we are proposing, uh, a narrow profile, uh, single pole structure, uh, with the crossarms carrying the, uh, the wires.
Those were nice.
Um, we publicly announced the project in August twenty twenty-three. Landowner postcard and packet will be mailed with with the project fact sheet, comment card and return envelope. Uh, project website will be, will provide project information, detailed maps and opportunity submit comments and inquiries. Uh, for a piece of response. A virtual open house will be, um, accessible from the project website to help engage landowners, tenants and other interested parties. Uh, along with existing potential line routes. Uh, project phone and email contact information we printed on all materials listed, uh, on the, uh, project website. Um, announce proposed line route early fall of twenty twenty-three. Right away agents to contact landowners immediately following route announcement. Anticipate construction start is October twenty twenty-four. Uh, anticipated service in the fall of twenty twenty-five and restoration completion late twenty twenty-five, twenty, early twenty twenty-six.
Hi, and this is Jessica again, I just wanted to, um, pop in really quickly. Um, I know it says that we plan to publicly announce the project in August, but we're actually holding until after we meet with the, um, National Park Service. So, uh, the announcement will be, um, in the next few weeks or a couple of weeks. So I just wanted to point that out.
So these are contact, uh, information is Jessica Lemmons and Ron Robinson. Um, and, uh, they're the emails and, uh, and phone numbers. Are there any questions at this point?
I have questions, but it's not gonna be related to this upgrade. So once we finish this, then I'll have some questions for you.
Okay.
Okay. So.
I don't have any questions, I just, I mean, I'd like to know what the National Park has to say about, especially about the new lines. That you're running.
Well, as Graham said, we, you know, we will be meeting with them tomorrow. Uh, this isn't the first project we worked in conjunction with them, uh, with them on. Uh, so there is a familiarity and, uh, we will work in conjunction with them to, you know, select the 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 best, most appropriate route.
And we have been in contact there as we've been going through, doing reviews and and scope and scoping and design. Uh, so they are, they do, they do know that we are, um, that we work in there. We have had some preliminary discussions with them. Uh, we did have a meeting planned in June, but that didn't, uh, didn't come to fruition. And that meeting was moved to September, but we have been discussing and they're all well aware of of, uh, what we do and what our plans are.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. If, 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 are there any questions on the Molly's Creek Leyland's project?
I don't have any.
No, I don't have any further questions.
Well, well, thank you for your time on that. Like, we just wanted to give you an overview of, uh, what the project entails. Uh, you know, so you're, you're aware of it before it's announced. Um, we will be working with landowners and advising them and holding virtual open houses to communicate this as we go forward. And, you know, take public comment to select that best route. So, uh, we appreciate your time on that and.
Mr. Robinson.
There was another question. Another Matic, yes.
Um, I have a couple of questions concerning the power grid upgrade that needs to be done by thirty thirty or twenty thirty-five. To meet federal regulations with EV autos.
Okay, I'm not sure I can answer all your questions on that, but but still, yeah, what would you, what can we help you with?
Well, we have one auto dealership in Fayette County and we need to keep it. Um, and from what I understand, they have reached out a couple of times, but have not gotten a call back concerning upgrading their power system to meet the new regulations. Um, and and I know that there's gonna be some growing pains with this. In order to get the power grid up to what's necessary, there's gonna be a lot more additional lines probably that need to be run. Because of the wattage and the amperage that's gonna be used. So if possible, if someone could reach out to Steven Chevrolet in Oak Hill. And discuss this with them, it would be deeply appreciated.
Commissioner, um, yes, do you have a, a specific contact you want us to reach out to?
Okay, I will, uh, I'll get that out to you as soon as possible.
Yeah, and you, um, if, yeah, you can email that to me or or someone there on staff or group would like to give me a call. We can contact them. I I have to determine exactly what what he means on his, you know, upgrade and and. And what he's needing upgraded service for as it relates to his business. But that's something we can work with him on, uh, get our engineering techs involved with and, uh, you know, meet with him to see what that's about.
Okay, well, I'll get you the contact information and send it to you.
Okay, thank you very much then.
Thank you.
Well, again, we appreciate the opportunity to present this today. Um, if if you have any questions on the contact information, feel free to reach out to me, uh, or or Jessica. And we will, um, we will work with you.
Well, thank you for the advance notice.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time this morning and and sorry for the glitches, but I hope it all came across as, uh, informative.
It did.
Okay, thanks so much then.
Now, we're a little late, but.
Mr. Burt, yeah, I think he's just the plain, the James right there, might be him, so I saw him chime in there. Mr. Burt?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
All right. Sorry, too late.
That's okay, very interesting presentation on the upgraded power system.
All right, you got the floor.
Okay, um, I'm gonna share my screen here. Oh, I disabled, am I able to share my screen? My my slide presentation isn't quite extensive as as theirs, I only have a few slides.
There it is.
Okay. Um, my name is James Burt. I'm the founder, president and CEO of Housed Up Incorporated. We are a five oh one C three nonprofit in Fett County, West Virginia, founded to end homelessness through housing and services. Uh, and the way that we're, uh, trying to combat homelessness and the, what this is called is a Fett and Raleigh County, uh, project. But we're wanting to build the project in Oak Hill to take advantage of the Fett Institute of Technology for some of our clients that'll participate in the program. But this is a Fett County, uh, Fett and Raleigh County Single Room Occupancy Permanent Supportive Housing Project. I just threw some examples up here of some other single room occupancy, uh, projects. But each, uh, participant will have their own, uh, room. But they may have to share, uh, kitchen, living room and, uh, bathroom facilities depending on how the project would be put together. But, uh, SRO, short for Single Room Occupancy and PSH, short for Permanent Supportive Housing Project. And we look to have a pathways, uh, housing first program in in the project. Uh, housed up will be one of the very first, uh, programs to have housing and, uh, services, both under one roof. And and doing both in one place. But, uh, because of the way West Virginia laws and everything are set up, we really need to do it that way. This project actually designed specifically for West Virginia type problems. But the housing first program, uh, that we're intending to use, and I blew it up here a little bit so you could see it, is an evidence-based practice. The pathways model to end homelessness is for people with mental health and substance use disorders. So specifically targeting, uh, populations, uh, uh, with a high co-occurring, uh, substance use disorder. Um, the, the Single Room Occupancy Permanent Supportive Housing Project will help take care of their basic needs listed in the bottom of this triangle of security, safety, food, water, warmth, having a place to sleep. While the programming will help meet their psychological needs, uh, with, uh, having intimate relationships and friendships, either reigniting those or or creating new ones. And a feeling of accomplishment by creating, uh, some of the stuff in their, uh, stability plan. To put them on a path to stable income and housing until they get to the self-actualization part to where they don't need us as much or at all anymore. And they can really, uh, do on their own the, uh, housing instability. But before we even get to that point where we can take them all through the project, um, we have to plan and build the project. So right now we have a ARC Inspire Planning Grant for fifty thousand dollars that's under review. I've been in contact with our, uh, project, uh, uh, the person that'll oversee our project, Tim Nowepki. At the Appalachian Regional Commission to nail down the deliverables for for the project. Award letters are supposed to go out this month. Uh, he had indicated to me that I should expect an award letter, but at no point in time was I told that I would be awarded a grant. I was just told that I should expect one, but they have been sending me invites to, uh, grantee, uh, conferences that they're having and things. So I feel pretty confident that we'll get the money. But the deliverables that we'll be delivering for the fifty thousand dollars are in these three fields here. In our activity, uh, resource and timeline fields. Uh, ten thousand dollars for a feasibility study for us to understand the population that we're trying to serve and how the community will feel about the project. Um, this will let us know if it's women with families, victims of domestic violence, LGBTQ plus, if it's minority populations. Uh, people with disabilities, are there any ADA regulations we need to, uh, adhere to, to, uh, for those populations? All that'll be, uh, figured out in the feasibility study. And that's, uh, timed out for October the first to December thirty-first. We're planning on acquiring property, uh, with help from the West Virginia Land Stewardship Corporation through their transfer of abandoned property program or TAP program that they call for short. Um, we planned on bundling together some property for this planned project. We will be consulting with Pathways to Housing in Pennsylvania, um, to produce a policies and procedures manual that's in compliance with, uh, Pathways to Housing Program. It probably won't be called Pathways to Housing. Um, but their specific program in Pennsylvania went from housing fifty homeless people to housing five hundred homeless people. With a eighty-five percent housing retention rate after five years. With our program, our outcome that we're looking for is to have an eighty percent housing retention rate after one year of completion of our program. So that's our specific outcome that we that we want to work towards. But the majority of our, uh, money for the, uh, award, as you probably well know, will mostly go to the architect to produce, uh, conceptual designs, a statement, uh, of probable construction cost. And, uh, to get started on our, uh, master plan and blueprinting. And then last but not leastly important is our HMIS and SPADA training through the West Virginia Coalition in Homelessness. Um, SPADA training, these are all acronyms, of course, it's all alphabet soup at at some point with some of these things. But these SPADA is a service prioritization data assistance tool. That helps, uh, determine acuity for people experiencing homelessness. So people that need the help the worst get it instead of just first come, first served, whoever's the first to sign up. People with domestic violence, you know, will get priority over people that are just single and homeless and don't have as many issues. Or people with family get priorities over people that don't have families, just for a couple of examples. And then the HMIS is the Homeless Management Information System. The statewide system is monitored by the Coalition in Homelessness. It is attached to a national system that keeps a national running count of the, uh, homeless management, uh, issue nationally. But, uh, we'll be receiving training, uh, on all those things. And, uh, the letter of support, even though, um, and and that's all that I have for the, for the presentation. Um, the letter of support, even though it's not, uh, requirement of the planning grant when we move into, um, implementation grant through Appalachian Regional Commission. They will want to see project feasibility. And if we have buy-in from the Fett County Commission and city councils and stuff like that, early on in the project, it'll show that we have more feasible project to move it forward into the construction phase. And that's all I have today.
With the feasibility study, is it gonna include a potential location to start? Cause obviously you won't be able to implement countywide off the bat. I mean, you have a certain area in the county that you're considering.
Yes, um, we've been talking to them and a lot of, uh, I I'm, we're planning in the, uh, in or around the Oak Hill area. And right now, um, places that mostly have properties on the abandoned property list are in the Scarborough and Whipple area and in the Harlem Heights area. So we'll be looking somewhere around there, but most likely in Scarborough, Whipple area, because there's lots of property on back taxes there.
I just wanna bring your attention to, you know, the Montgomery area has a high homeless population, especially because of the Amtrak. Um, but also, um, I, we were just talking with the chief deputy prosecutor this morning about some issues down there. Um, but it also has the former, uh, West Virginia Tech dorms.
Yes.
Um, so that's a, that's a location that might be easier to to get going.
Good idea.
Further, Fayette County has several abandoned schools. Um, where there's been funding available for, you know, for upgrading those schools, so that might be a place to look. And we also have just funded, uh, a dilapidated housing program here in the county. And a land rehens agency to try to work on rehabilitating or destroying and redeveloping areas where, um, we knocked down dilapidated homes.
I would be interested in that, uh, but because our program is very client-centered, I would, uh, want to make sure that they have access to trade school trainings and stuff like that. Which I'm pretty sure at, uh, Bridge Valley offers some things like that, I think.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, I, I worked actually, uh, I worked for GIS for a little bit and and I did, uh, janitor work at those tech campus buildings. So I am a little bit familiar with that campus down there. Um, so I would be willing, yeah, and part of the feasibility study will be actually finding suitable, uh, property. We have some money set aside, um, to do the transfer of abandoned property. But if more suitable property that would fit our, uh, program better is found. Um, then I would be willing to pursue money for that in the implementation grant if that's what's required. So the, so I'm sure that we could find a path forward with it is i- is what I'm getting.
So it sounds like a great initiative, we'd definitely like to put you in touch with, um, you know, get you oriented into our, our programming here. So so you can see what's on our lists, because we have been active in in the dilapidated housing issue. One of the things that we've raised multiple times is on these homes that can be rehabilitated. We wanted to engage civic organizations to rehabilitate those homes for people in need. Because we have a housing shortage countywide here, not, I mean. We have a housing shortage countywide here, not, I mean, you know, some people are technically homeless because there's nothing to live in around.
I know that our program will be a little bit unorthodox compared to what's, what's out there a little bit. There's no, there's not a sobriety requirement to enter our housing. There is two requirements that participants will agree to when they start the program. And that is one, they will be agreeing that they will be finding a way to pay their own rent at some point in time. They don't have to know today how they're going to do it, but that's going to be a goal we work towards is figuring out how they're going to pay their own rent. And then number two, they will agree to a minimum of one visit a week from our housing counselors to help work them forward. Now, our housing counselor will help them create a stability plan, which is to help them find stability in housing and income in some way. And then the other services that, that are needed are, are to be brokered from services that already exist in the community. So different case managers, and we are intending to hire the person that we hire to manage the cases for people. We want to be a peer recovery coach or a peer recovery support specialist, so they'll be able to play that dual role in, in helping the population and have peer-led support.
Have you engaged with our health department about the plan?
I have not. One of the people that are on my board of directors is Raven Hill. She's, sits on the Health Department for Marion County. She's part of their quick response team. I was interested in getting her on the board, though, because she can bill Medicaid and that's something that we're going to be looking into moving forward to. But I would, I've been working on this project for almost five years. I founded a nonprofit in twenty nineteen, so I've been working on it a long time. I'm just now getting to a point to where we can actually maybe make something come out of it. So I am looking to build my capacity to, on my board of directors and things as well. And administratively, we have a, an administrative council as well to help us make decisions. So I'd be interested in any experts in the field, at least sitting on the administrative council, if nothing more than to give us advice on what to do through the board.
Questions?
Everything was just plain.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. Let us know if there's anything we can do to help. Besides the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, if, with some of these programs you were talking about, if you could give me a contact person to help introduce me to some of these other people, that, that would be great. I, I would, that, that would be much appreciated.
Will I make a motion to, for a support letter, commission to second? On favor?
Aye. Okay, Mr. Burt, can you put your email address in the chat, please?
Absolutely.
And we'll shoot you an email.
Absolutely can, and thank you for your time and support.
Or not, someone else. Okay.
And I think we're going to, on the ten thirty, I think we're going to postpone it to October eighteenth.
A motion, second.
On favor? Then I'd like to, for the ten forty-five, since we're almost there, I'd like to appoint Ms. Taylor to the mediation, we need a mediation representative, second.
This is specifically for the hazmat spill into Paint Creek is going to be a mediation. And we're going to have the mediate, first mediation session on September eleventh. So they are empowering me to represent the commission for those negotiations. And those will be within the parameters that we run by our council. So I plan to attend that mediation on our behalf and that's where we're going to discuss damages and what we're willing to accept in the lawsuit we have filed against the company responsible for the spill, which was in part a result of the DUI of the driver of the hazmat truck. And the majority of the victims of that spill do reside in Fayette County, even though Canal County has made much ado about its part in it. So that's what this is about. That's all in favor. I should abstain. I'll abstain for that. Angela Martin is abstaining, please. Okay, did we, I think we hit it.
Yes, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Let's do it.